This time, I'd like to call and order the July 11th Planning Commission meeting. Let the record show that Mr. Mike Bardwell is not present. All other commissioners are present. Commissioners will note we have a revised agenda this evening. We'll go ahead and get things started. Item 3 on our agenda, acceptance of the minutes of the June 13th, 2007 meeting.
Move they be approved?
Have a motion by Sherri Slimon to approve.
Second.
Second by Paige Becknell. Is there any opposition or discussion? Motion passes. Item 4, public comment period. Anyone wishing to come up and address the commission on any agenda item that is not up for public hearing, please come up, sign in with the secretary, and you will get your three minutes to speak. Okay, no one wishing to speak. Before we get started, I do want to announce that we were to have a public hearing on Bullion Crossing and Parisian Villas. Parisian Villas was the other one we were supposed to have a public hearing on, correct?
When it was taken off.
I know, that's what I'm announcing it was. So if anyone is here for either of those items, we will not be discussing that this evening. All right, moving on to item 5, public hearing for granting approval to the following family partitions. 5A, the Mary D. Leauquette and Ronald J. Leauquette property, tract A, B, and C.
My name is Scott Lobel. I'm with Lobel Engineering and Land Surveying, and I represent the Leauquettes in the following family partition. We received comments by the Engineering Review Agency, and we have addressed those comments, and tonight we ask for your approval on the following family partition, and I'll try to answer any questions you guys may have.
Comments or questions by commissioners?
Yeah, I've got a question on the, just a property, the, we have bought property. Is that passage of servitude already there, or is that part of this package that you're putting in?
It's part of the package that we're putting together. Mr. Larry Boukwa is the attorney, and he's doing the paperwork on that, and it will be filed with the map.
Will she have to sign anything saying that this is satisfactory?
Yes, we have a signature block, Jan M. Bullock. That's the owner of that property, and we're also getting him to sign the plaque, and Mr. Boukwa is preparing a servitude agreement.
Okay, I didn't say it. Thank you.
We're straight. Any other comments or questions by commissioners? Okay, then at this time, we'll go ahead and open up the public hearing. Anyone wishing to come up and speak on this item, please come up, sign in with the secretary, and you'll have your opportunity to address the commission.
But it didn't look, you know...
No one wishing to speak. Comments or questions from commissioners? What's the wish of the commission?
Make a motion to approve.
I second. Have a motion to approve by Steve Barrow and a second by Scott Courtwright. Is there any opposition or discussion? Motion passes. Item 5B, the James J. Wolf property, lots 2-A-1 and 2-A-2.
Ellen Jackson with McLean &amp; Associates, representing Mr. Wolf, who's subdividing this to give a lot to his daughter. There were some comments, they have been addressed. We're asking for your approval.
Comments or questions from commissioners? There are no comments or questions from commissioners, then we'll open up the public hearing. Anyone wishing to come up and speak on this property, please come up, sign in with the secretary, and you'll get your three minutes to speak. No one wishing to speak. Comments or questions from commissioners? What's the wish of the commission?
I have a question.
Okay.
There is a note on the letter from the health officials about the sewage removal.
That's on the next one, not this one.
Okay, it's on this one in my packet, so...
I thought it was on the next.
Okay, number 3 is going to the next property?
Yeah. I don't have a number 3.
They have 5.
Oh, they put them together. Okay, I'm sorry, I see, I see. Okay, one more question, Ellen. I see the note about the bridge going over the ditch.
Yes.
And the owner is aware of that?
Yes.
That would be their responsibility?
And what is the wish of the commission?
Then I'll make the motion to approve as it meets the requirements of the ordinance.
I have a motion to approve by Sherri Slimon.
I'll second.
Second by Paige Becknell. Is there any opposition or discussion? Motion passes. Item 5C, Manshak Estates, lots 28-A and 28-B.
Ellen Jackson again with McLean &amp; Associates. This is being subdivided so that the son can give to a father. The initial comments had been addressed, but then some comment, this last one from the Health Unit came in while I was on vacation. Since then, I have gone to Mr. Methvin, and he supposedly has sent an email to Charles, but I have copies of it right here where he has no objection.
Comments or questions from commissioners?
I have a question for Charles, just about this subdivision being subdivided, a lot being subdivided for family partition. Has that been done before in this?
Yes.
It has been done?
It has been in this subdivision.
Okay, thank you.
You misspelled system.
But Charles, this is different from the one that we denied a few months ago?
What's that?
This is different from the one we denied a few months ago? That was just a simple division?
It was a simple division, and the lots were smaller.
Okay.
It was three lots.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Ellen, the mobile home that's there on 28A looks very close to the servitude line. It's not on the...
He's not on servitudes.
All right, just wanted to make sure.
Couple inches off.
Any other comments or questions from commissioners?
It's all color, not one hood.
And 20 feet is acceptable, Charles? The servitude of passage is 20 foot is acceptable?
For the one lot.
But you can have a 20-foot for one lot. The ordinance allows a 20-foot servitude for one lot. There can't be any further division of that one lot.
And there's no restrictions in that subdivisions to affect this?
There is a note on the plaque stating that...
Are there any other comments or questions from commissioners? At this time, we'll open up the public hearing. Anyone wishing to come up and address the commission on this property, please come up, sign in with the secretary, and you'll get your three minutes to speak. No one wishing to speak. Comments or questions from commissioners? What's the wish of the commission?
I'll move for approval.
I have a motion to approve by Julio Dumas, seconded by Don Grant. Is there any opposition or discussion? Motion passes.
Thank you.
Item 5D, Verla W. Brown property, tract V-1 and V-2.
James Fager, representing Earls &amp; Associates, on the following family partition. Came to my attention yesterday that the map was a little hard to read. It happens when a map like this, it's 142 feet wide by a track of land that goes over half a mile deep, you know, when you scale this thing down a lot, it's hard to read, and then when people make copies of copies, you know, it gets a little hard to read. So I presented everybody with a copy, full size, 24 by 36 of the plaque. Some comments were made, and all of them were addressed and corrected on the plaque, asking the planning commission for approval. This is a grandmother to granddaughter partition.
Comments or questions from commissioners? If there are no comments or questions, I'll go ahead and open up the public hearing. Anyone wishing to come up, speak on this property, sign in with the secretary, and you'll get your three minutes to speak. No one wishing to speak. Comments or questions from commissioners? What's the wish of the commission?
Just out of curiosity, since that bridge leaves your property and goes into an adjoining property, are there any servitudes from each other to use that bridge?
Excuse me, I can barely hear that.
The bridge traverses track, one track, onto an adjoining property owner?
That's all family land out here. It's used to be Mr. Joseph Brown's property, and it got divided up amongst everybody. Right now, there's one gentleman who's actually raising cows on pretty much the whole property, and he just uses that to cross, yes. As far as, there's no servitudes right there.
Are we comfortable that nothing else has changed on this plot that's legible from the plot that we had before that was not legible? I went to Charles Monday, and I told him, "I can't read this. I would have to either abstain or deny because I can't read it." So, I know this is a family partition, but it's still, you know, it's still important. But I just want to throw that out there in case anybody else has any opinion.
You know, we're instructed to present six full-size copies and one 11 by 17. That's what we're instructed to give. I mean, if we were instructed to give everybody full-size copies, you know, we would definitely do that. You know, what happens when you take some map this diameter and you shrink it down, you know, it's what we're designed, it's what we're told to give you. I mean, it's what happens when copies are made of those copies that we present, you know, we're technically not responsible. I mean, how do we know what's making copies of?
Section 40 of our code says you're to present legible copies.
And we did, we presented them.
I'm not sure how legible this could have ever been, even when you presented it to our staff.
Did Mr. Sanji get a, Michael, did you get a small copy or a large copy in your review?
I think we'd get a large.
So you've reviewed it, you feel comfortable that it's consistent?
Yeah, the latter we did.
There are no comments or questions, we'll open up the public hearing. Anyone wishing to come up and speak on this property, please come up, sign in with the No one wishing to speak. Comments or questions from commissioners?
I'm satisfied that I was comfortable with it, so I'm going to go ahead and move for approval.
I have a motion to approve by Julio Dumas.
I second that.
Seconded by Scott Courtwright. Is there any opposition or discussion? Motion passes.
Thank you.
Item 5E, the Amen E. Arsenal property, tract B-2-A and B-2-B.
Good evening. I'm Clint Quentinmore, representing W.J. Quentinmore Surveyors, asking for planning commission approval on the family partition of the Amen Arsenal Jr. property into two tracks, B-2-A and B-2-B. There were no comments from CSRS, and there are no comments from the planning commission.
Comments or questions from commissioners?
I've got a question. This is one piece of property, and they're subdividing two lots off of it, is that correct?
That is correct. B-2 into two lots.
And why would there be an existing 20-foot passage of servitude on the first property coming off the road?
That was created in 1995, when it was subdivided into B-1 and B-2.
Are there any other comments or questions from commissioners? At this time, we'll open up the public hearing. Anyone wishing to come up and speak on this property, please sign in with the secretary, and you'll get your three minutes to speak. Ain't no one wishing to speak. Comments or questions from commissioners? What's the wish of the commission?
Let me ask you a question. You don't control tract B-1, correct?
That's correct.
So the 20-foot servitude passage is a pre-existing condition, correct?
That's correct. It was created in 1995. The owner was willing to give up 12 feet for the utility servitude, which was not done in 1995. I don't know why it wasn't done. Would not agree to anything further of encumbering his property.
All right, well, based on the pre-existing condition and the fact that this track of land is not under the control of the applicant, I'm going to go ahead and move for approval.
I have a motion to approve by Julio Dumas.
Second.
Seconded by Steve Barrow. Is there any opposition or discussion?
Does this have to have, do we have to make, do we have to include the variance in the motion, in their variance on the...
As a family partition, it's understood.
I don't think there is a variance because you, we are...
Well, no, the variance in a family partition is the road, not adequate road furniture. So the variance is understood, just under the family partition ordinance. Any opposition or discussion? Motion passes.
Thank you.
Item 6, public hearing for granting preliminary approval to the following subdivision, 6A Cornerstone subdivision.
Good evening. Brandon Acosta, GWS Engineering, representing Doran Enterprises, here to present the preliminary plat of Cornerstone subdivision. 16-lot, single-family residential subdivision, located approximately 500 feet north of the intersection of Parker Road and 929. We have submitted a drainage-impacted study, traffic-impacted study to the ERA. All comments have been addressed. Take any questions you may have at this time.
Comments or questions from commissioners? There are no comments or questions from commissioners, then we'll open up the public hearing. Anyone wishing to come up and speak on this item, please come up, sign in with the secretary, and you'll get your three minutes to speak.
My name is Bill Freeman. We live on the corner of Highway 929 and Parker Road, adjacent to the proposed Cornerstone subdivision. We live on, our family lived on this property since 1971. Only in recent years, we've seen, with so much development, we've seen problems with Black Bayou flooding. During Hurricane Rita, the water was up to the mortar on the first brick of our home. And there's another subdivision down the road, Fox Run, they had three or four houses in there that were almost taking on water also. It's not uncommon to see the Black Bayou come out of its banks with a hard rain. We're not against growth and development. We feel that drains, roads, and sewage in the schools are not growing as fast as residential and commercial development. We are very concerned about the increased possibility of flooding of our property and those around us. Although Black Bayou has recently been dredged, it's not been proven that this will alleviate the flooding problem. We've got Jamestown subdivision, which is two houses down from our property, and has a proposed three-foot drain, which will be 100 feet from our house. We don't know if the Bayou can handle this additional water from this first subdivision, let alone the second one. We don't want to end up like the people on Poirot Road when they built the subdivision on 621, and we had the, during Rita, they had massive flooding in those houses. And that's our main concern, we don't want to be flooded out. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Tammy Colligan, and I'm also a property owner, and my property is adjacent to the proposed Cornerstone subdivision. And I'm also concerned with some other neighbors about the retention pond that will be going into Black Bayou. Like my neighbor just said, there's also another subdivision on Parker Road, Jamestown, that has a big retention pond that will also be going into Black Bayou in the near future. And we're all concerned about the additional water that will be going into this Bayou, that it will be, you know, the additional water that it will be taking on. Because several of the residents have come really close, like within an eighth of an inch of flooding prior to these retention ponds even draining into that Bayou. Also, another concern that we have, we would like to see a fence be put up between the retention pond and the adjacent property, because that retention pond is going to go all along the back of my property. And I have small children, and I'm just concerned about the liability, what's going to happen if a child or somebody gets into that retention pond? Who's going to be liable? Because that retention pond will be backing up to my backyard. Also, another concern we have is about the sewer treatment plant. We have friends who live near the sewer treatment plant in Quail Creek, which is the big subdivision across the road from us. And they say that the sewer treatment plant for them is really loud, it runs constantly, it has a terrible smell. So, we also want to know what kind of screening and sound barrier is planned for that. And another question we had was about, there's a 100 by 140 lot that's on the map, and it's not really specified what that land will be used for. It doesn't show a house on it or anything, and we were just wondering what that was going to be used for. Thank you.
Thank you. No one else? Come back up.
If I could answer some of the questions. The drainage problems, I think both parties mentioned, they're concerned about the additional water coming to Black Bayou. As you all know, the ordinance does not allow any additional water drainage runoff. There would be a reduction in the flow in Black Bayou because of the retention that we're putting in. The treatment plant, they do go through some pretty stringent requirements with DHH. I know they have to put a fence around them. Quail Creek, it was built five or six years ago. We were actually an engineer on that project, so the requirements are a lot more stringent now than they were. The fence, I cannot speak on that, the developer would have to. I cannot obligate him to put up a fence. And the lot she mentioned, that is not a part of this subdivision. That will be kept by the original property owner.
Comments or questions from commissioners?
Has a fence been considered on the backside of the retention pond, as she asked?
I think Mr. Ronnie's going to come up and speak on that.
Ronnie Doran, I'm the developer. I'm willing to consider a fence. I'm not able to commit to it right now. We've had some issues come up with that request before. I've got to look at the tree line, I've got to look whether there's going to be a swale ditch along that property line before I can commit to put up a fence. We're concerned about privacy for my development, as well as these adjacent property owners are for their safety and privacy as well. Ran into a previous development that I was asked to put a fence along the property line. DPW had a problem with where it should be placed because there was a ditch running through there, so I'm just not able to commit tonight, but I am willing to work with the property owners any way I can.
Let me ask you a question. You check with the pipeline to make sure that you can put a driveway to the treatment plant over their pipeline easement?
As far as I know, y'all have discussed that.
We have met with pipeline people, and obviously, we will have to go through a stringent permitting process for the whole subdivision with them, along with the ERA. So, there's a lot of things that they will have to review again, just like Michael and his firm will. So we have to get a separate permit besides the one we have to give to the parish.
All right, one last question, lots 8 through 14. Do those lots meet minimum size requirements if the retention pond and the slope area were removed from the lots?
The lots that are going to be sold are going to be 70 by, what they say on the map, 206 feet, so they are minimum. The actual land, I guess you would say, I don't have it shown on the map. It's probably, I don't know if it'll be the minimum 10-5, but the lot they're buying is, the water is included in that.
Well, I have an issue with that, because essentially, what they're getting, that usable lot, may not be the minimum requirement. And, you know, from an operational perspective, I'm wondering if the retention pond shouldn't be in common ownership with homeowners association to ensure that it's properly cared for for the benefit of the community.
We looked at that, we actually submitted this at the pre-app as a, where they were minimum size lot, 70 by 150, and we were going to do a dry retention area, not a pond. All parties that were there agreed, including planning commission staff, ERA. A wet pond in this situation would be a better deal for the people involved. Michael, you can comment if you want to.
I just did some quick math. They have 8,800 square feet to the 80-foot building line, and there's still some green space behind that, so that's, is it 10,000 trolls, 10-5? So, I mean, they're very close to it, but, you know, normally, that lot size is counting, that rear building area as well. They just have a pond instead of a backyard. And it is correct. We have had severe problems with dry retention ponds. We do not want any, if there's any way we can avoid it, so we would much prefer to have a wet pond.
All right. No, I can appreciate that, I just hate to see it become something else in the future.
Well, my question is, is Track A a common area, or does it belong to the people that own their lot?
Track A is a common area for the subdivision.
So the retention pond area and its banks are common area?
No.
The retention pond itself?
If you look at the Track A, it's got a little hatching on it. That's, it actually goes, encompasses the pipeline right away, goes all the way to the front of the subdivision, gives, I'm assuming everybody else in the subdivision access to the pond from the backside.
And access to cut the grass on the other side.
It will be for the homeowners association.
So then here's...
That's the back bank of the pond.
Here's maybe another question, maybe for staff, that I don't really understand. How can we have... How can we have, and we've probably faced this before, but I haven't caught it maybe, but how can I have a common area that's designated as a pipeline right of way, and it's also a common area for a subdivision?
Because the-
It's the right of way-
Property owner still owns the property. Pipeline company doesn't own the property, they just have a servitude.
Scott, technically, I think it is a pipeline servitude. The property owner still owns the property. I see it's labeled as a right of way, but it probably should be labeled as a servitude.
It's just a joint use as a common area and a pipeline. But the pipeline company can't control the ownership. They just, if they just have servitude, they can't control the ownership, and it's the owner's prerogative to keep it as is, subdivide it, create it as a common area or whatever.
The last comment that I have is that, you know, although it's in the code, I frankly don't see those T turnarounds. It's very functional for emergency vehicles. And, you know, the code, the code requires 100-foot diameter for a functional cul-de-sac, and I don't, I don't see what, it would impede your ability to, to still have the 16 lots if you were to redesign Bailey Avenue to have cul-de-sac.
I thought you might ask that question, so I brought you some plats.
Wait, 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 whoa, whoa, no, no. I, I understand. Julio and I, I agree with you, all right? But, like you said, you know, the ordinance is called-
I'm raising it as an issue.
But what I'm saying is, let the developer and his engineer and our ERA make that determination until we go ahead and we get something straightened out. I'm still, I've still got some raw data that I need to get to our ERA to get this issue worked out.
And Mr. Chair, I don't have an issue with what you're saying. I'm raising it as an issue from my perspective, and that's all I'm doing. If he wants to, if he wants to answer it, I'd like to see his response. Simple as that.
I'll go ahead. I'll let you go, take the issue up with him, but I want it understood. I don't want it part of the motion, as far as the cul-de-sac is concerned.
I will answer it if you, if you allow me.
Go ahead.
With the cul-de-sac, you cannot get 16, 10,500 square foot lots on this piece of property. You would actually lose two lots. And I have a picture of-
I'd like to see the picture.
Okay.
Go ahead, let him see it.
And this is actually what we've designed in the past, this is a 70-foot cul-de-sac, so you get a good idea.
Well, the question is, what's better for our safety and fire folks, or police, or whatever? Mr. Sanji, is it better to have a cul-de-sac turnaround? Is there, should we change the ordinance, or what's, what's the issue?
I'm not going to speak on behalf of fire departments or police departments.
No, I just mean on design. Speak to design, what's better for design's sake?
I mean, to me, the center part of the cul-de-sac is, is much of a problem with them trying to turn around. If the T is designed properly, to me, it's a, it's an easier maneuver to turn around. I mean, no matter how big you make the cul-de-sac, you can get a moving van that can't get around it. So, to me, the issue, if we're not happy with the T, it just needs to be enlarged. But the T can serve as a, I mean, it's served many subdivisions well. I mean, I think the issue is, if we're not satisfied with the T, then let's look at the geometrics of it.
Right, exactly. Well, my issue is functionality, is it working or not? If it's not, then let's change the ordinance.
Right. I don't think it's the issue of the T versus the cul-de-sac. Either one improperly designed does not work. So, you know, I, I think we're being over-restricted to say we can't use one and not the other. We need to look at the geometrics of both and make sure that they're sufficient. But there are plenty of subdivisions, as he just mentioned. Throw a cul-de-sac, you just, you know, you're chewing up a lot of usable land.
And, and you're 100% right, it's down to the geometry of it. And this is a small subdivision, so it may not even be an issue, that the road is relatively short. I, you know, it becomes, the longer the road, the bigger the issue. I'm just, I'm just bringing it up for discussion purposes.
Any other comments or questions from commissioners?
We did, we did have a meeting about, we did meet with the fire department, some of us were present, and it seemed to me that they were indicating that cul-de-sacs were preferred. I think there's still some meetings to be had on that, but I think getting some understanding from them would be valuable in this discussion before we move forward with any ordinance.
Absolutely. Well, you know, my goal is to make sure we're, we're setting a standard that's applicable for those folks that have to do that emergency response. I mean, we, you know, if it's a cul-de-sac or a T, I'm not an engineer, I don't know what it should be. All I know is I want to approve a subdivision that somebody can have their house put out if their house is on fire, or whatever the case may be. That's my two cents. Or three.
The issue is going to be discussed at the next subdivision ordinance committee meeting, where we will have more information for you, hopefully for next month's meeting. We can bring a recommendation on this issue, and hopefully, we can clear this up once and for all. Okay? Yeah, are there any other comments or questions from commissioners? What's the wish of the commission?
Just for clarification, on the fence with the retention pond, we're willing to, what was the wording on that, work with the residents? What does that exactly mean?
I think he said he was willing to consider but not commit. We would have to look at all issues involved.
Okay. I think somebody can-
The trees are major, you know, if there is any trees directly on the prop line, they do cause problems when putting up a fence, and where you can put it and stuff like that.
Right. I think somebody can probably help you with the servitude line and whatnot to where to put the fence. But apparently, y'all aren't willing to commit to do anything on that, or the, the cul-de-sac. Is that right?
He cannot go forward with the loss of the two lots. The project wouldn't be feasible.
Well, I think the issue of the fence, if I understood the developer correctly, he just doesn't have enough information as to whether to commit or not. I mean, I hate to put it to you this way, but I think you need to be prepared, you know, to answer those things, especially if you've met with the neighbors and you know that's an issue. So, you know, personally, I feel that the fence needs to be there.
That is an impact to the neighbors, so I agree with that. This is a preliminary, but she has a good point, she has kids and whatnot, that is a good point to consider.
The, the issue of the fence was just called to my attention two days ago by one of the adjacent property owners, so, you know, we're just at the very preliminary stage of this. I haven't even gone out and looked at that property line. I've been out of town, I just got back yesterday, and I spoke to Ms. Colligan on the phone a couple of times, and that's when she brought up the fence. So, by me telling you I'm not willing to commit, I think some of the commissioners here know me, and know that, you know, my word is good, and I will do everything I can. Like I said, I'm, I'm concerned with, we're going to develop a nice subdivision there, we're going to have $250,000 homes plus. And so, you know, it's not an issue of whether I'm going to worry about spending another few thousand dollars on a fence. It's when you come down to trying to put it out there, and DPW comes out and say you can't put it on this property line, it's just hard for me to commit today to it. Now, I'm willing to meet with the property owners, I'm willing to, you know, maybe they want to provide some servitude on their side of the property line for it at some point, you know? I'm willing to look at everything we need to, but I just can't tell you today that I can put a fence on that servitude, or on that property line, rather. That's, that's the only issue. It's not saying that I'm not going to put a fence, just I don't know physically if we can put a fence back there right now, or where it would be placed.
So, your issue is really, where will DPW permit it? And two, you know, the possibility that it may have to be an inch or two off your property.
That's correct, you know?
Right, so, so if we, if we condition the preliminary approval that said, subject to approval by DPW, you know, you'll build a fence there? I mean, if DPW says you can't put it there, and you've got to go next door. Well, really, the concern isn't Track A, the concern is the pond.
If Track A flows onto that, into that drainage servitude, the fence is going to cause a drainage problem.
No, right, I mean, the issue isn't, isn't Track A, the issue is the drainage pond from the adjacent property owner.
Well, yeah, if the drainage comes from the other property into that drainage servitude, you can't put a fence there.
Like I said, that's why-
Drainage ordinance saying you can't do that, so.
Well, Mr. Doran? Yes. Is this, is this something that, okay, I understand, you're willing to work with us on it, it's all right.
Right.
Is this something that you can conceivably have an answer for us when it comes back for a final approval?
Oh, yeah, definitely.
Okay. So, this issue, let, let's give the developer the opportunity to get with DP, oh, well, actually, drainage. It's not DPW, it's drainage. DPW no longer handles drainage, they've been separated. Let's give him the opportunity to work with the ERA and drainage, and when they come back before us for a final approval, he can give us more information, we can verify through the planning department, with the other entities, and let's take it up then. Is, is that reasonable? Does that, does everybody, satisfied with that? Okay, what is the wish of the commission?
I mean, that's an undefined period of time, though, between when, when we're approving this and the final plat. I mean, what's the variability on how, that could be six months, that could be three We need to document it as such that it will be brought up again.
Then put it in the motion. Or you can request staff to minute it, and that, then when you vote on the minutes next month, that becomes part of the official record.
I have a question too, Mr. Sanji. Why do we have property lines going across the, the retention pond? Why isn't the, why isn't that common ground? In other words, if I lived, if I built a house on Lot 12, and somebody from the subdivision in Lot 4 took their kids around the backside and went fishing, and somebody slipped in and, and something happened right behind my house, in the water, within Lot 12, even though it's part of the water, is that my liability? I mean, other subdivisions that we've seen, I have not seen where the property line goes out into the water, over the water. It stopped at some drainage servitude, and the water hasn't been part of their property line.
I'd say generally, you're correct, that the property lines stop, shard, and the retention ponds are common areas. But I think, I think we have seen these before. But I think you're raising a valid point. I'm sure it's there to meet the minimum square footage requirement. That's why the lot is, is extending through there.
Well, that's my concern, is that if, you know, I mean, I don't want to impede anybody's progress in life and, and building a subdivision, but it just concerns me that, that these people are going to own part of this retention pond. You know, and that means Lot 5, 6, or across the street, they can visit the pond, but as far as the maintenance and upkeep of the pond in the future, liability to the homeowners association, it doesn't get carried by the homeowners association, it gets carried by those people that own that individual lot. And that gives me great concern. Why was it designed that way? Let me ask you that question. To meet the minimum standard?
The only thing I can say is that the only other alternative is to get the minimum lot as a land, like you say, without the water. But then you are stuck with a dry retention pond that, when we met at the pre-application meeting, none of the parties involved wanted. This is the best situation we can come up with for this development, and it is a unique development. I wouldn't say that it's a common thing.
Charles, what's the minimum square footage? You'd have to have 150 in depth. And you've got 206 less 80 is what? They could partially meet your, your concerns by bringing that, making that common area wider, or go through the middle of the pond, but not totally. I mean, a servitude could be placed along the edge of the retention pond, say the water's edge, that would place that area in, the problem is, these retention ponds generally are privately maintained, DPW does not want to do them, so we don't want servitudes in favor of, of the parish. But I presume they could grant a servitude in favor of the common area, or in favor of the subdivision association, that would give somebody the policing rights to maintain it. But from a liability standpoint, you know, that's, that's something the developer or the lot owner has got to ascertain when they buy the lot. Are they willing to buy a lot where their property goes into the lake? It's, it's been done before, it's not what you normally see.
It's not what I like to see done either.
Well, I-
I mean, there's no, are we going to put stakes in the middle of the water and show people where my end of the water ends?
No, they would-
I mean, that's unrealistic.
They're going to put an off, a stake on the property line-
Exactly. And when you buy the lot, you're thinking, well, my property ends at the water, and we can all enjoy the lake, because it says right here, common ground, anybody can fish and get to it and so forth. So, I don't like it designed this way. I think it should be the homeowners association's responsibility, I think one person should carry liability over any particular piece of water. I think it should be the homeowners association's responsibility for maintenance and liability.
Are there any other comments or questions from commissioners? What is the wish of the commission?
Well, I don't know how to, how to word this, but I don't like the design, so I'm willing to either defer till you guys come back with a better design, or I'm prepared to deny, make a motion to deny on this preliminary plat.
State what part of the code that you're denying.
Things that I don't like, the denial will be based-
With the code, in accordance with the code, not in accordance with what you like. State what you're denying on the basis of the code, that's what I'm asking you to do, please.
Safety.
Yeah, I think public safety comes into mention, specifically on lots eight through 14, how the detention, our retention pond is designed. What's that?
The net building area?
Yes, the building area. Yes, the building area. T-turnaround, is that a question, O'Neil? I'm not sure how that's, no, we can't say anything about that.
The T-turnaround, they're allowable in the code.
Okay. That'd be enough to base my denial on. Retention pond design.
Have a motion to deny by Scott Courtwright.
I'd like to make a substitute motion to defer and allow the developer to revise the map in accordance to the suggestions, including figuring out how to put a fence on the backside of the retention pond.
I'll second that motion.
Which motion are you seconding, the substitute motion or the original? Okay, do I have a second on the original motion? And then the original motion dies due to lack of a second. I have a motion to defer by Steve Barrow, seconded by Julio Dumas, is there any opposition or discussion? Motion passes. Item 7, public hearing for granting final approval to the following subdivisions, 7A, Shadows of Ascension first filing.
Brandon Acosta again here, GWS Engineering, representing Living Joy Ascension, asking for final approval on Shadows of Ascension first filing. Update, we are scheduled, I spoke to Sean before the meeting, we are scheduled to have our final inspection tomorrow morning. The only thing that remains to be done is just some final lot grading. All of the infrastructure is in place.
Comments or questions from commissioners? If there are no comments or questions from commissioners, I'm gonna go ahead and open up the public hearing. Anyone wishing to come up and speak on this property, please come up, sign in with the secretary and you will get your three minutes to speak. No one wishing to speak. Comments or questions from commissioners?
I'll move for approval, subject to acceptance by DPW and passing all inspections.
Have a motion to approve with condition by Julio Dumas.
Second.
Second by Paige Becknell, is there any opposition or discussion? Motion passes.
Thank you.
Item 7B, Pelican Point Golf Community, ninth filing, phase 2.
Ellen Jackson with McLean and Associates. There were some comments on this final plat and they have been addressed, final inspection has been done, all punchless items have been addressed, asking for your approval.
Comments or questions from commissioners?
You've passed all your inspections.
Excuse me?
Passed all your inspections.
Yes.
Any other comments or questions from commissioners?
Charles, what's the, just curious, out of curiosity, what's the radius required for cul-de-sacs?
68 feet.
68, okay. Somebody had said 100 the other day, so I was-
68.
Okay, thanks.
Any other comments or questions? And we'll open it up for public hearing, anyone wishing to come up and speak on this property, please come up, sign in with the secretary and you'll get your three minutes to speak. No one wishing to speak. Comments or questions from commissioners?
Move for approval.
Have a motion to approve by Julio Dumas.
Second.
Second by Alan Kraus, is there any opposition or discussion? Motion passes. Item 8, public hearing to consider the following simple divisions of property with a variance, 8A, the Annie Virginia Briniak Estates, Track A-1-A through A-1-E. Is there anyone here to represent this property? The Annie Virginia Briniak Estates.
Mr. Chair, I'll move that in light that there's no representation, that we defer and advise the applicant that he needs to be at the hearing in order for us to process the application and the defer would be with fees.
Second.
Have a motion to defer the repayment of fees by Julio Dumas, seconded by Steve Barrow, is there any opposition or discussion? Motion passes. Item 8B, Jimmy Golche Property Lots 2-A-A-A-1-A, 2-A-A-A-1-B, 2-A-A-A-2-A through 2-A-A-A-2-C.
You wanna say that again?
Nope. Once is enough.
Ellen Jackson with McLean and Associates, proposing this simple division with a waiver, there weren't any comments, and we're asking for your approval. The last time this came before you, it had an issue with the servitude, since then it has been revoked, so... Asking for your approval.
Are there any comments or questions from commissioners?
Charles, I don't see any other documentation on what has happened with this before, sometimes we're provided with history, can you explain what happened with previous attempts on this property?
Well, the previous request on this property was for revocation, is like Ms. Jackson said. It did go before the council. They sent it back to you, as you remember, and you heard, had another public hearing on it and you again recommended that it be approved. It did go back to the council and they approved it the last time. And that's all the action that's taken place on it.
Yeah, I do, I have a copy of the ordinance, just come and call it.
Are there any other comments or questions from commissioners?
I have a question for Alan. Alan, if I remember correctly, you, you questioned the size of these lots, were you, did you ever go back and recheck these and you were satisfied?
Yeah, I was trying to think of what the, what the servitude, what was the servitude of the town? The servitude that was revoked, tell me.
It was a 10-foot servitude adjacent to the 20-foot existing servitude of passage. It was a 10-foot utility servitude, just moved it over and we're dedicating a 12-foot utility servitude in lieu of the 10-foot.
Okay, no, I didn't go back and, and check it, Sherry.
Okay, and one more, one more comment, Alan. Under the private dedication, um, should it say East Baton Rouge or should it, should it say Middle Ascension?
Oh, yeah, it should. Use the wrong insert.
I was reading notes.
Are there any other comments or questions from commissioners? At this time, we'll go ahead and open up the public hearing, anyone wishing to come up and speak on this property, please come up, sign in with the secretary and you will get your three minutes to speak.
Good evening. This is a private driveway.
Would you state your name for the record, please?
Bonnie Borrell.
Thank you.
I'm a resident on this dri, on this driveway and there are also residents in back row there. It's an eight-foot driveway that these, they're trying to develop these lots on. And the property was sold by my dad. The day the property was sold, that's when the LLC was formed. It says he intended to give it to his children, but while it was LLC formed. This is a loophole that contractors are getting around your regulations and I ask that you do not grant this variance. I have pictures here of the driveway.
Thank you.
Thank you.
If you please, Commissioner, I'm Roland Stevens, the owner of the property. The reason the LLC was formed is for insurance purposes with litigations, lawsuits and what have you. And it was under the advice of my counsel that that would be the better way to, to actually ensure that it was limited risk. Also, as far as the driveway being questionable, the driveway was there before we purchased the property and it already services many other parcels that were subdivided by various families in the back section. Property that I own is the frontage. And when it was sold, to me, it was understanding that those folks would continue to have use of that property in the back and we haven't done anything to change it. All we've done is improved the property and tried to make it a nicer place and the reason that it was not done in a family partition is because under the advice of council, this was the correct way to handle it, since it was part of LLC. And if I can answer any other questions, I'd be happy to do so.
I have a question.
Shoot.
Mr. Stevens, how old are your children?
They vary in age from 23 to 8 years old. I have five.
How many over the age of 18?
Three, two. Two and one right at 18. I might add that the parcels that had already had been divided among the family members that owned that property, some of those have been sold and sold off to other individuals as well. And I can assure you, anything that I do on that property will be, to say the least, better than what's there already. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Good evening, my name is Charles Borrell. I live at the end of the driveway. Our concern, most of the residents down the street, excuse me. The driveway, like we said, is a private drive. It's only eight foot wide. It already shows distress for the traffic that's on the driveway now. It's my, my wife and myself, my brother-in-law and two other neighbors. We're concerned that further in the future, say Mr. Stevens' children do, you know, move there, develop on these prop, on these lots, you know, five, even 10 more vehicles on this private drive. I mean, we're just concerned what's gonna happen later in the future. One of our concerns was, one of our concerns was, I know there's no more trailer parks in the parish, but there's a trailer existing on it now and we just didn't want anymore. We didn't want any more trailers on the property to rent out. I know it wouldn't be considered a trailer park, but that was one of our concerns. Sorry. But mainly the distress, mainly the distress on the road, which is a private road. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, my name's Sean Layton, I also live on the property. Like, like Chuck said, one of our main concerns is the road. There's only five residents there now and what Mr. Stevens plans to do would more than double the amount of residents if they put something on each of those lots. Also, I think you'll see that the lots aren't large enough to do much more than put a trailer on. So, regardless of what he's been telling everyone, I believe his intention is to put trailers there and rent them out. You know, these renters don't have to pay for upkeep on the road, so is he only gonna pay his one share and when he has five or six homes on that road? And also, my yard already holds six inches of water on half of it. You know, if you develop these five lots, it's gonna double the amount of water that's going back that way, 'cause that's the direction that the water travels. Thank you.
Thank you. That's it, alright.
Could I respond to some of those comments?
Yeah, well, yes, sir, I'm gonna allow you, as the owner of the property, to respond to those comments.
Thank you. With regard to the so-called drainage question, that's already been looked into and examined and approved. The gentleman that just spoke owns property on the other side of the road. There is no drainage from one side to the other. The road in itself is somewhat of a levee. So, whatever occurs on his side of that existing asphalt road is something that this property doesn't have anything to do with. I've got a drainage ditch on the other side of the servitude that runs all the way back to Joe Severio Road. Approximately 85% of my property drains to it and out that way. There's also a 100-acre subdivision that's supposed to be built behind me and my engineers has met with their engineers and should there be a drainage problem with the other properties involved, we've come to an agreement where we can tie in to his system in the future, so that would alleviate that problem. Also, the, last week, I met with one of the councilmen, Jerry Savoy, out there on the property, to look at these issues. And the reason he's not here tonight is he was satisfied with what we had proposed and what we saw and what we were supposed to be doing. So, there again, the last time I came before you with this, the council asked me to have the servitude revoked, the commission as a premise to have it approved. We went before, we went through the channels, we had it done and I will ask you for your approval this evening, thank you.
Thank you, sir. Any other comments or questions from commissioners?
Charles, this is an eight-foot driveway. Under the code, there's no requirement to, to provide for two-way traffic, widen that driveway?
This is private and we have no real jurisdiction over it.
It's a 20-foot servitude of passage, that's what's required.
Forty foot.
The driveway has nothing to do with us.
So, so we don't have any standards on how that 40 foot's supposed to be improved?
It's a 20-foot servitude of passage, that's what's, we don't, the driveway's not ours. We don't have requirements on private driveways.
Well, yeah, and I guess that's why I'm kinda, I'm kind of like a little, a little troubled by this, you know, because this is, because he bought this property as an LLC. For putting it in LLC, he can't do a family partition, although that's what his intention is. But putting it into LLC and doing a simple subdivision, we have a private servitude of passage with no standards, but if we were doing a family partition, he'd have those standards.
Sir, no, just, you, let the commission go ahead and discuss it right now.
Okay.
And it's not a family partition, so, and I really just asked how many, about your children, because you look too young. That's why I was asking, I didn't mean it as I was trying to point fingers. But, but I, really, that should not come into consideration either, because it's not a family partition. He's, although he says he's giving it to his children, we can't really hold him to that, because it's not a family partition, correct?
It's, it's gonna enforce as a simple division of property.
Right, okay.
Any other comments or questions from commissioners? How many families use the driveway?
Currently?
Currently.
Probably seven. Five, I'm not sure.
Let her answer, one here. Okay. Then what you need to do is recognize Ms. Borrell and direct your question to her, not just throw answers out. Yeah, I agree. Ms. Borrell, can you answer the question?
Six, a good few residents, a possibility of nine, including his and my brother that has an acre and a half there. With this, it would make it 12.
I don't see that being a driveway. I mean, that's my concern like who do? A driveway is maybe one, two at the most. When it's only, you had a picture, can you, Ms. Borrell, can you put the picture under that blue light? Okay. I was wondering.
And this is another picture here of the driveway. It was a family drive, it was built for family.
But there's no ditch on the sides of it, so it's not like you're going to fall off of it if there's two cars.
And this is the drainage, this is some of the drainage problems that we have there. I don't know if you can see them, because they're dark. And we were told the lots could not be developed on a private driveway.
Do you have something?
I was going to ask Charles to, if he could recite to me what the standards are in a family partition for a servitude of passage.
O'Neill, can you speak to the, what would deem a public safety issue if an eight-foot road wouldn't deem that?
We have a 20-foot servitude, that's what's required. An eight-foot road, I'm not an engineer to make a requirement on that, but I mean, you don't have to have an eight-foot road. You can have, it's 20 feet. All 20 feet can be used.
Right, but I'm talking about public safety and well-being. Isn't that kind of a judgment call as far as what that is?
I don't understand the question, because the problem, if you had an eight-foot with ditches on the side and everything like that, that'd be a different story than just a flat eight, flat 20-foot servitude with eight feet of pave. That's completely different. So I really can't address that issue.
And our servitude here is an existing 20 plus a 20, so it's 40.
Are there any other comments or questions from commissioners? Mr. Stevens, you made the comment on the drainage. You said that you had a drainage plan that was approved. Who approved it?
It's an agreement with the property owner that's trying to buy, to develop the property behind us. I've got one lot that does not border on the existing servitude, and the natural drainage for it is through his property. So we've got a letter from their engineer that says, in order, if there is any problem with drainage in the future when they develop that property, that we can tie into their drainage scheme, and they have no problem with that. And when it was reviewed by staff, Mr. Godey found that everything was applicable. There was no problem with the drainage. That's how it got to you folks now.
Evidently, with water running, sheet flowing like it does, there's a concern with drainage that needs to be addressed. My concern is, you put four homes on here, I don't know how you're going to control the direction of the water around.
No, sir. If you look at the plot, there's a drainage servitude, or there's actually a drainage ditch in the back part of those lots, and the land that I have is in the very front of the property. All that drains towards Joe Severio Road. The pictures you saw are in the back, after the peak of the land where it falls the other direction.
And which way does it go?
It goes through that development that they're proposing to do behind it, the 100-acre subdivision that's in the rear. It doesn't come to Joe Severio Road. I've got a plot, I can show it to you if you'd like. Y'all don't have it?
Well, I mean, we got, that's all we got. Well, are there any other comments or questions from commissioners?
I'm going to, I'm going to offer a motion. I think that if this is going to have a nearly doubling the number of lots on this, on this, for lack of a better term, pre-existing family partition.
Could I interrupt one moment? Instead of creating five lots out of one, we're making five lots out of two. It's two existing lots now.
Notwithstanding that, fact of the matter is that there's going to be a significant impact. So I'm going to make a motion to approve with the condition that the existing private asphalt driveway along these five proposed lots be expanded to have a minimum of 20-foot width of roadway with a 24-foot roadbed, as required in the code under other sections. This will ensure that the existing precondition of the existing lots will remain as is.
Can I make a point of clarification? The existing road is not on this property.
It's not on this track. A big chunk of it's not on this track.
So I'm not sure if he has the right to improve it or not?
Well, in that case, then he has to build it within the, okay, then the existing road that within the servitude, and then continue on to Joe Severio Road.
And then you're going to have two streets coming out on adjacent areas, side by side?
He can, I don't know, what, do the other houses on the other side? It appears that there's only a small section, it doesn't come in there.
But how are you going to deny the owner of lot 2B, 1A, that he can't use the driveway on his property? I don't understand this configuration either, because the drive is not in the servitude. But I know one thing, if you build a new drive, you're going to have two driveways coming out within about 10 feet of each other.
Well, at Joe Severio, at the intersection of Joe Severio, the road isn't, a portion of the road is in the servitude, so you could expand it there. Just, you know, there's going to be a sliver in 2A, A2A where they're not contiguous. But it appears contiguous in the first two lots, and then obviously, it's in the back lots. That's an issue he'll have to resolve with his neighbor.
That's.
That's my motion.
That's your motion.
I have a second, but that's my motion.
Well, I have a motion to approve with condition by Julio Dumas. The motion dies for lack of a second. What's the wish of the commission?
Go ahead.
I just want to point a clarification with the chair. After so much time, what happens?
Well, if the commission does not act, then...
In 60 days, it's approved. You don't act on this.
Well, I was going to say, if the commission does not act tonight, then I'm going to bang the gal and say, approved, due to lack of action on the part of the commission.
I'll make a motion. I'll make a motion to approve, because I believe it meets the requirements of the ordinance.
And I have a motion to approve by Sherri Slime. Which also dies due to lack of a second. How much time do we have? Well, normally, I give y'all two minutes, so right now, you're a minute and nine. No, two, a second, that's what I want to know. Well, if y'all don't jump out, you know, I mean, I'm going ahead and I'm allowing you a total of two minutes altogether now to go ahead and get a motion out there in a second, because at the end of two minutes, I'm banging the gal.
I'll move to defer and ask the petitioner to work with the property owners across Gottlieb Zito Lane to see if he's able to work it out so that he can widen the road.
Second. Okay, I have a motion to defer by Julio Dumas, seconded by Steve Barrow. Is there any opposition or discussion?
I'm opposed.
I have one nay. Sherri Slime, motion passes. Yes, I know. Okay.
What you do is next month, you say, as previously read.
No, I'm not going to do that. Item eight, public hearing, no, it's item nine now. Item nine, public hearing to consider the following servitude revocation, 9A, Oaks on the Bluff, first filing, lot 12 and 14.
Peter Lee Green with Peter Lee Green Construction, just ask you to revoke the drainage servitudes on lot 12 and 14. They both drain back through the retention pond. It has been approved by the drainage commission.
Comments or questions by commissioners?
I just have one question. Why is it just 12 and 14 and not 13? Why not make a straight line?
It's only two of our own.
Okay, that makes sense.
Good answer. All right, with this one, I've got some questions, because I was going and looking through the comments, and the first one I've got on it, staff recommendation, recommend revocation of servitude as requested. Based on what? Or the other comments?
We have DPWs.
Well, DPW doesn't do drainage anymore.
But that's incorrect, it's not DPW, it's really the Drainage Board, and we recommended approval based on the Drainage Board's recommendation.
Okay. The question I've got is, this development came before us, first filing was granted a final approval for 1906, and the second filing was granted a final approval, 8/2106. We granted these approvals based on the design, which includes the servitudes. So now, almost a year later, we have someone that's bought a couple of lots, that knew what was there, where the servitudes were, asking us to revoke it, and in my opinion, I mean, we're going back and we're contradicting ourselves, because we're going to take it out. And, I mean, who's going to keep track of these lots as they come before us for somebody to remove a servitude? I highlighted the two lots. So if you have people that continually come along to request a servitude revocation, and it could turn into a checkerboard. I was looking at one of the comments, purpose of revocation, servitude is not needed. Well, it was needed when it got a preliminary approval, and it was needed when it got a final approval, and yes, I understand what our ordinances require. It's not needed for lot 12, but are you telling me that lot 7 through 11 is still needed? Lot 13 is still needed? Lot 15 through 16 is still needed? But it's just not needed on these two lots? At what point do we go ahead and say, no? And of course, it's going to be up to the commission. Just some things I'm looking at right now.
Well, if it's not needed, why should we deny them use of their property?
If it wasn't needed, why go ahead and have it incorporated into the design preliminary?
Maybe it's something we should look at and take out of the ordinance, or revise the ordinance.
I look at the situation we have right now. Drainage is a big issue right now in the parish, and I have to...
Well, the fact of the matter is, is that this is but a lake, and the lots, all of these lots probably sheet flow, the front yards probably sheet flow into the street, and then the backyards all sheet flow into the lake. That's basically.
And the elevation is probably 10 or 12 feet from the level of the lake to the level of the house. I mean, there's plenty of flow there. What I'm doing is, I have a client who wants a swimming pool.
And the age of the plant, you know, that's a real lot line, and the code required that servitude when the plant was filed. Simple as that. No effort was made to look at it and say, oh, oops, that's a lake, which shouldn't require it.
But then, at the same time, why aren't we taking care of this type of thing when it gets a final approval?
Well, the final approval's a little late, I think we need to do it at preliminary approval.
No, I don't think it's preliminary. I think the final is where it should come, because by that time, all, everything should be worked out. All that should be worked out. But what I'm saying is, now we've got, almost a year has passed, we have individuals that will continue, I mean, if this, look, if this was a 10-acre tract, and you had two small lots that were cut out, and we had a drainage servitude across the back of them, they wanted to revoke it, I could understand that, and I could agree with it. This is a subdivision that we granted an approval to based on a specific design. And now, it's coming, a part of it's coming back to us to say, to have that servitude that we, yes, and that was part of the basis for our approval, take it out. And in a sense, to me, it's a contradiction.
I'm just asking for the use of my property. I mean, I have a client that will spark on this deal now.
Sir, it's a servitude, you are not denied the use of the property. Not 100% of the use. No, can't put a swimming pool on it, but that's not denying him a complete and total use. But I say, it's still, it's going to be up to the commission to decide what the deal is with it, but all I'm saying is, I've seen a bunch of this stuff come up.
Is there a board or a desmentor or something like that that they can go to, with us having to do it?
That's going to open it up for public hearing. Anyone wishing to come up and speak on this property, please come up, sign with the secretary, and get your three minutes to speak. And no one wishes to speak. So comments or questions from commissioners?
Well, I understand what you're saying, Chair, you know, Mr. Chair, but I, the fact of the matter is that we need to, you know, that's the age of the plant. It was viewed at the time as if it was just a plain old rear lot that required a servitude. There was no consideration, given that it was a lake. I think the circumstances have changed, because it is a lake today, so I'm going to recommend approval, remove approval.
And I have a motion to approve by Julio Dumas.
I'll second.
Seconded by Sherri Slime. Is there any opposition or discussion? Motion passes. Item 9B, GT Owen, property lot C-2-C-A-1-A. No, I'm not going to say that one again either.
Good evening. I'm Jim Tatum with Tatum Engineering, representing La Salle Point Development. We're here tonight asking to revoke and relocate an existing 12-foot utility servitude. No utilities or improvements were ever constructed in this servitude. We're not aware of any issues, objections, or concerns about relocating the servitude. Ask for your approval, and I'll be glad to answer any questions you may have. Thank you.
Any comments or questions from commissioners?
The new servitude's already of record?
Yes.
Can we assume this Department of Public Works, no objection, should be drainage as well? Oh, okay, utility servitude, so that's correct.
Are there any other comments or questions from commissioners? And we'll open up the public hearing. Anyone wishing to come up and speak on this property, please come up, sign in with the secretary, and get your three minutes to speak. secretary, and get your three minutes to speak. No one wishing to speak. Any other comments or questions from commissioners?
Make a motion to approve the revocation of servitude.
Second.
I have a motion to approve by Scott Courtwright, seconded by Don Grant. Is there any opposition or discussion? Motion passes.
Thank you.
Item 10, committee reports, 10A. Well, the subdivision ordinance committee met last month. There are still several issues that we are trying to get worked out, to bring recommendations to the commission. In fact, we picked up a couple of new ones, which is the T-turnarounds and cul-de-sacs. I said, hopefully, we can bring some recommendations to the full commission for next month's meeting.
Right, and you've got a meeting, what, a week from Friday, at noon?
Yes, not this Friday, but next, the 20th.
Right.
The 20th, yes. At 12 o'clock at the Plan Department. 10B, Strategic Planning Committee report. Mr. Parent, is, did you attend the last one?
What?
The Strategic Planning Committee.
I did.
Mr. Sigler, did you attend the Strategic Planning Committee report?
And there were a couple of items that wouldn't be of any particular interest to you. The drainage ordinance, they've had a couple of subcommittee meetings, and it is ready to come to the next Strategic Planning Committee meeting, whatever that is.
That's the drainage ordinance?
That's the drainage ordinance.
Okay.
It really exists?
Well, it's...
Okay.
It has been through numerous revisions.
We'll see. All right, item 11, new business. Do commissioners have any items of new business that they'd like to bring up?
The only thing I'd like to do is, is I'd like to take to the zoning subcommittee meeting, or the planning subcommittee meeting, I should say. I guess the appropriate one would be the zoning subcommittee meeting. I'd like to take a draft, impact your ordinance, and I'll distribute to all of the members later on in the week for discussion and subcommittee meeting, and then hopefully bring it before the full commission for public hearing sometime in the future.
Okay.
That's it, just wanted to mention it.
All right.
I would like my comment too on the new business. I know I've spoken about this before, but there's one particular subdivision that came before, well, was supposed to come before us tonight. We need to move on the landscape ordinance quickly, because this particular subdivision tonight has a lot of historic live oak trees that would've been lost in this parish, and I think that needs to be looked at. So wherever that needs to go from this point, you advise me, but landscape ordinance, who, where, when does that go? We need to put it before the council and let it roll.
As I recall, I may be wrong, landscape ordinance was part of a package that was presented to the Strategic Planning Committee. We never had anything to do with it.
I have a copy of that, if you would like to see.
I would like to see it.
Okay. So, right now, it rests with the Strategic Planning Committee.
Who's the chair of that committee?
Kent Shake Snyder.
Thank you.
I would actually ask Mr. Sigler to distribute that to all the members.
Be happy to do it, it's a rather substantial document.
But it's not approved, it's still in the works?
No, this was one that Strategic Planning, you have to fill me in, this is before I got here, but my understanding is they contracted with an engineering firm, and they produced four or five ordinances, or...
There, yes, this was, this is something that Strategic Planning has been, or has had now for two or three years. It was part of a package deal that was supposed to be worked on. Nobody, I don't know what's happened with it. I have no idea. Part of that package has been presented, it's come through this commission, it's gone to the council, the rest of it has fallen by the wayside.
How often do they meet?
They meet once a month.
I will staffle and get copies made of that, it'll take a few days to bind that, because it's a pretty good sized document. We'll have those bound and out to you sometime early next week.
You can call me, I'll come pick it up, save postage, I live down the street, so it's easier for me.
Okay, if there are no other items of new business, then we'll move along to item 12, old business, 12A Commerce Center. Ron, you or Charles want to go ahead and enlighten us on this?
In the package, you have a letter from Evans Graves Engineers. Evans Graves Engineers is a consulting firm for this development. They, after the approval of the Planning Commission, the preliminary approval, they met with the DOTD, and DOTD changed some of the requirements as far as the off-site improvements, and these are spelled out by the engineer in one of his emails to me. And this is being presented to you for your information, and in discussing this with O'Neill, Mr. Parenton feels that you all will have to vote on this, and it's my understanding it is an amendment to your original motion. I've also included a copy of the minutes that reflects your motion, and then also the discussion of those improvements by their engineer.
Okay, so, we will have to, we will have to vote tonight on this as an amendment to the motion, to the original motion?
Yes.
Okay. Mr. Sanji, I've got a couple of questions for you pertaining to this. The further requirements placed on this development by DOTD. How does this affect, I mean, if it takes out some of the, some of what we required, what's changed up?
Long story short, the requirement on them before was on Highway 42, was to add an additional right-turn lane onto Airline Highway, coming from the direction opposite from the development. It was determined that, and this is the developer in consultation with DOTD, that there was not sufficient right-of-way to do that. What they worked out with DOTD was to add a totally new signal at a different entrance point to the south of Highway 42. And so, when we received the plans and the information from the developer, we felt that this was a significant change from what the Planning Commission approved, and consulted with Charles regarding the need for this to be notified back to the commission.
Now, of course, with this particular development, we have another issue, being that we have a proposed planned unit development coming in right behind it, and if I'm not mistaken, some of the talk has been, as far as their main entrance, would come through this development.
That is correct.
So, I may be jumping the gun a little bit, but seeing how all this has changed up, what, how is that all coming together now? Because I'm going to assume, all right, I'm going to assume that since we required a traffic impact analysis for this development, and we're requiring a traffic impact analysis for the other development, and DOTD has changed up some of our requirements, then that has changed up, I wouldn't say that it's changed it up enough to require another full, full-on impact development, but I could see where there could be some more information that would be required.
I'm gonna attempt to answer this, and I'm gonna let Sean correct me where I am wrong. A traffic firm was hired initially to study this and came up with the original proposal. For whatever reason, when they began dealing with DOTD, possibly because another firm had more familiarity with the intersection, another firm was hired and did a study to complicate the matter worse. When Bullion Crossing was proposed, a third traffic engineering firm was engaged. We are still, actually, we received a, we finally received today, a traffic study from the Bullion Crossing developer that we think is attempting to show us what we have asked for all along, and that is to show both, the impact of both developments together compared to the existing condition that is out there today. In other words, without each developer assuming that the other one is or isn't gonna build. Unfortunately, that was received.
Received about, I believe it's two to three days ago, probably two days.
Earlier this week or Friday, and we have not had a chance to review that particular impact study.
But you do feel that it's gonna give you all the information that you need pertaining to both developments at this time?
Yes.
They submitted once, and what they did, the Bullion Crossing development utilized the, assumed the build-out of the Commerce Center development as its existing condition, and we said, no, neither development is there today. We want both developments proposed compared against the existing condition. And so, now they have resubmitted that, we think that they understand what we've asked for, and they've just submitted it, so we just haven't had a chance to get into it yet.
Okay, because I'm starting to get a little concerned when I start hearing that we have three different traffic engineers coming in.
Well, let me say this, I don't doubt the wisdom of DOTD, and I mean that seriously. They looked at the fact that it just didn't work at Highway 42, and proposed a new signal, and apparently the developer is willing to install the new signal. So, it's a federal highway, DOTD has jurisdiction over it. I doubt very seriously that we're gonna find anything that we're gonna go back to DOTD and say, no, this doesn't work, that's really not our realm to do that. I think we just have to make sure that both developments are accounted for, and that we fully understand the impact. And I think we'll be able to do that and review it prior to next month's meeting, when you review Bullion Crossing. As far as this development's concerned, their traffic, I mean, their construction plans are, I believe, ready for approval, with the exception of this issue. And they've been working diligently to try to gain the approval of their construction plan, so I would think that you could work out, for one, you're gonna get an update next month on the whole situation, when the Bullion Crossing gets heard. I would think you could put some form of stipulation that we would want to have final approval of all the traffic improvements before this Commerce Center files the final plat. They both have to work together, they're coming through each other.
Right.
So, if we present a problem, or an issue or requirement to the Bullion Crossing, Commerce Center is gonna be obligated to do it.
Well, I tend to look at it from the point of view that Bullion Crossing needs Commerce Center more than Commerce Center needs Bullion Crossing.
That's gonna be between them to work out.
So, I agree.
If we put a requirement on Bullion Crossing, it's gonna have to happen, and that's gonna force the two to work it out.
I was kinda looking at, you know, we've got an issue here where DOTD has placed some further requirements, so I'm wondering, is our traffic impact analysis, it sounds to me like they had to do two different traffic impact analysis, one for us and one for DOTD. Is that...
No, it's not that, it's a difference of, I mean, yes, I think there's probably difference of methodology in DOTD's traffic impact requirements in Ascension Parish, but I don't think that's the issue. The issue was the improvements that were suggested in the original study just physically could not be made without acquiring right-of-way. A private developer does not have the right to go expropriate property to put in an improvement, so they had to find another solution. They were forced to find another solution. And I would think DOTD was probably, obviously relieved that they could figure out another access point for this development that would not further burden Highway 42. So, again, at this point, I can't say what we're gonna find, but I doubt very seriously that we're gonna go back to DOTD and tell them they're wrong. It's their road, it's their jurisdiction, we're just simply trying to make sure that the developers are providing for their impact. And I really don't see where we're gonna have an issue here, but we just haven't, just because the way things have occurred, we just haven't been presented to us and had the time to look at it, just because of the complexity of the situation.
Okay. Charles, I think you...
Yeah, let me just say one thing. Bullion Crossing, as you can see in that letter that they sent to us, requesting to be taken off the agenda for tonight, they do not request that it be heard next month, and when we received the letter requesting it be taken off the agenda, that was past our date, our deadline date for items to be submitted to me for the August meeting. So it is not on the meeting for August. I mean, I just want you, you know...
So that gives Sean 60 days to review the traffic study.
There's that much extra time.
Right, and again, we will look at it, and we can see it, I just... I'm comfortable with allowing Commerce Center to proceed with the construction of their subdivision. If there are issues that come up, we just have to be in a position that we can clarify them or direct them. I mean, maybe it's a longer turn lane, whatever, but as far as the signal location and who pays for it, that's really already been determined.
Well, I guess the way I look at it, as soon as the state, because of course, yes, it's the state road, okay, yes, the state's right. As soon as they came in with their requirements, that pretty much, that's it. So, but I did want to touch on a few points with you to make sure that, of just what's going on, because we do have, this is kind of a situation, it's a funny situation in a way, but we have had this, in fact, we talked about one development tonight, we've got a similar situation because of, which are Shadows of Ascension, and then we have Parker Place, and then there's another situation, the corner of 44 and Germany Road. So, I mean, these little things come up from time to time.
I've been waiting for this scenario to occur whereby the developers come to us, their traffic is approved, it's on a state highway, and then they've gotta go to DOTD to get a permit, and the scenario changes. I'm surprised it hasn't happened yet. And it probably has, but not in this substantial of a change, and because of the change was so different from what was proposed, we just felt we should communicate that back to the commission.
I'm sorry.
Well, and I, we'll probably have some even stranger situations arise at some point in time. I just want to make sure that we are getting, as far as our drainage and our traffic impact studies, that we're not engineering someone to death, that we do have exactly what we need, and...
Well, I think developers, DOTD now, one of the differences, they have now put into effect their own... into effect their own traffic impact policy. It is now a written policy that is published and out there, okay? And that, I'm not sure exactly what date that occurred, but I believe now that we're beginning to see developers take a closer look and begin to study the traffic impacts the way DOTD wants to see them when they do the traffic study for us.
That's not the one that was approved March 2nd, 2005, was it? Traffic impacts policy for new access requests of state and US highways?
Yeah, but I don't think that got approved in 2005.
Well, it may have come out at that time.
It came out. It came out. There was a lot of objection from the development community and then it kinda got tabled. And as I understand it now, it is in effect. Again, I don't know, DOTD has the power to put something like that in effect and you'd never really know when it occurred.
Look at this. I was playing around on the internet and came across it.
Yeah, it's...
It was originated two years ago, but I don't think it's in effect at all.
O'Neill?
Yes?
Exactly what is the mechanism that we're supposed to do this amendment? Motion, how do we go back and amend a previously approved motion?
Well, I think you would have moved to amend the off-site improvements to comply with DOTD standards.
Okay. Why don't we open the public hearing?
Right. DOTD requirements.
Right, good. Then, then another, is that it?
That is the document, but it's...
Well, you know, the internet's slow still in some cases.
I don't think it changed. It just sat there for two years and then finally, or a year, whatever.
I'm just gonna ignore draft.
In order to make it an approval document, we have to just remove the draft from it.
No. State says it's good, it's good. There are no, well, there are comments, any other comments or questions? If no, then we'll open up the public hearing.
What do we need to do on this?
We're going to open the public hearing right now. When that's finished, then we'll, they need to entertain a motion to amend the motion, amend the original motion to or accept the revisions to the... Yeah, but accept the changes as per DOTD. Okay, so, I'm gonna go ahead and open up the public hearing. Anyone wishing to come up and speak on this item, please come up, sign in with the secretary and we'll get you three minutes to speak. No one wishes to speak. Okay. So, if there are any other comments or questions from commissioners? No, then I'll go ahead and entertain a motion to amend our original motion.
I'm gonna make a motion to amend the original document to comply with DOTD requirements.
Second.
I have a motion to amend the original motion by Paige Becknell, seconded by Julio Dumas. Is there any opposition or discussion? Motion passes. Item 13, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
We've distributed to you some checklists for TNDs. And this has been worked on by Sean with CSRS. Would like for you to review this and if you're agreeable to vote on these at your next month's meeting.
So, you need a motion? Put it on the public hearing?
Bring it up next month for public hearing.
So, moved.
I have a motion by Julio Dumas to open, hold a public hearing on traditional neighborhood development checklist, seconded by Scott Courtwright. Is there any opposition or discussion? Motion passes.
Make a motion to adjourn.
I have a motion to adjourn by Scott Courtwright, seconded by Steve Barrows. Is there any opposition or discussion? Motion passes and we are adjourned. We'll reconvene in 10 minutes.
Five minutes.